The recording for the meeting is now being started, so keep that in mind.
Marilyn, are you there?
Yes.
Can you make Mark Mishoe the host, please? If you would highlight his name and go to more or the three dots and make or promote to host.
Make host?
Yes. Thank you. Apologies.
Welcome, everyone. This is Lisa Cronister. If you are here for the Stakeholder Advisory Team meeting, you're in the right place. I think almost everybody has joined, but we'll give everyone just one more minute before we begin. Okay, let's get started. Again, my name is Lisa Cronister. I'm the Assistant Planning Director. If I haven't met you previously, I'll look forward to meeting you in person the next time we get together. And I want to thank everybody for for the time they've spent already in preparing for this meeting. And welcome, everybody, to this inaugural meeting of the Stakeholder Advisory Team Special Meeting. There are a few announcements regarding how this virtual meeting will work. One, as you've been advised, this meeting is being recorded. If the video conference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting will be stopped and reconvened once the audio and/or video connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within 30 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued to Friday, June 19th at 1:30 PM via video conference. The agenda and documents were emailed to the committee members, team members, and they are also located on OKC.gov. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment, please call 405-297-2406 or email mark.mishoe, that's M-A-R-K dot M-I-S-H-O-E at OKC.gov. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to comment. When you call in, staff will be muting your line. Please keep your lines on mute until you are recognized to speak. To unmute your phone, press star six. We ask all participants to keep their lines on mute until they are recognized to speak. Advisory team members will be allowed to ask questions or comment at any time during the meeting. Please remember that only one person can be heard at a time. If more than one person speaks, we will not hear you both. For anyone speaking today, including team members, please identify yourself first when you begin to speak. Staff will be doing a roll call approximately every 30 minutes. And with that, I will call the meeting to order and ask Mark Mishoe to do a roll call.
Thank you, Lisa. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Amy Appitone. Showing her absence. Allison Barta Bailey. Showing absent. Jessica Black.
Mark, I'm here. This is Allison Bailey.
Okay. Thank you. Jessica Black.
Yeah, I'm here.
Todd Booze. Okay, I'm showing him absent. Gary Brooks.
Mark. Mark, this is Todd Booze. I'm here. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Gary Brooks. I'll show him absent. You're here?
Yeah, I'm here, Mark.
Andy Burnett. I'll show him absent.
Sorry, I'm here as well.
Ophelia Cancio.
Present.
Nathan Cowell. Cowell.
Present.
Thank you. George Chernico. I'll show George absent. I think he's here. Oh, I see him. George, I'm gonna count you present because I see you on the screen. James Cooper.
I'm here.
Scott Cravens.
Present.
Joel Dixon.
Here.
Jonathan Dodson.
Present.
Carl Edwards. Carl, I see you down there. I'm gonna count you present.
Thank you. Here.
Clay Farah.
Here.
Chris Fleming.
Here.
Chip Fudge.
Here.
Asa Highsmith.
Here.
Is Asa here? Okay.
Yep, I'm here.
Julie Hornbeek.
Here.
Andrew Wang.
Present.
A.J. Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Mark Livingston.
Present.
David Lloyd.
Present.
Ricardo Montoya.
Presence.
Nikki Nice. I'm gonna count Nikki absent. Jim Perick.
Here.
Emily Pomeroy.
Here.
Janice Powers. Pardon? I'm gonna count Janice absent. Now, if you're on a if you're on the telephone, you'd have to do a star six to unmute yourself. Mark Ruffin.
Here.
Deema Ramadan.
Present.
Todd Stone.
I'm here.
Tim Strange.
Here.
Bryce Thompson.
Present.
Marcus Uday.
Present.
And Mark Zitzow.
Present.
I just want to go back and check on Amy Appitone. I had her as absent. With that, I think everyone is present except for two. No, three. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mark. As everyone can see, we have a packed agenda. So we'll get right to it and we'll be moving pretty fast. But there will be time at the end for questions and discussion. So to start with the basic question of why are we here? And what are we, what are we doing now that we are here? Many of you on this call were involved in either the Plano OKC update and/or Phase One of the code update project. So you have a little bit of this background. So the reason we're doing this project is to implement the Plano OKC recommendations. Plano OKC is our comprehensive plan. That was updated several years ago. And that plan recommends many, many policies to to completely fulfill the plan. So we're here to implement the Plano OKC recommendations. We're here to improve the efficiency and outcome of development. And I know, you know, there are city council members, planning commission members, a lot of professional industry folks, developers, contractors on this call who are all interested in making development the best it can be, making it the most efficient it can be, and making sure that public and private interests get the best possible product. So improving the efficiency and outcomes of development. This project also seeks to make the process easier to navigate and administer. Again, many people, most of the people on this call have had experience in what it takes to get a project done. So throughout the course of our work, we will be looking at the planning and zoning code. We'll be looking at the subdivision regulations. We'll be starting off by taking a deep dive into the sign code. And along the way, we'll touch aspects of other codes such as drainage and nuisance. So the staff and consultant team have followed a set of guiding principles since the beginning of our work. There were principles that were developed to better articulate and make sure we are, we are always on the path we set out to be on. For example, making the code user-friendly has been a long goal. If, if we don't achieve that, what have we achieved? If we have a code update that doesn't have broad and sincere community support, that would be a missed opportunity. We want to make the right things easy. We want to make sure we're consistent with best practices. And as we get into the code update in particular, you'll see there are some legal aspects of that that we need to comply with. We don't want, back to right-sized code, we don't want a code that's too simple or too complicated. Needs to be right for Oklahoma City, as big and as diverse as we are. It needs to be comprehensive and integrated across all aspects of development. We need clear processes. Again, back to making it, making a code that's user-friendly and making the right things easy. You know, is it clear how to get things done? And is it clear what's allowed and what is allowed under what circumstances? We want to avoid non-conformity. We don't want to redo everything and be left with too many developments that, that are left non-conforming, that don't meet the new code. And then much of our work will be for naught if we can't effectively enforce the, the new rules that we have developed. So where does the stakeholder advisory team come in? The SAT's role is to help staff and the consultant, planning staff and the consultant team to develop the code. That will involve being a sounding board that will bring ideas to. That will include, so include big picture ideas such as being a sounding board, but it will also include some potentially detailed work in terms of reviewing and refining code drafts. And then at certain points, we'll be asking you to test the code, to run through some scenarios to see if the result of what has been drafted achieved what everybody set out to do. They, the team will be relying on several guiding documents. One is Plano OKC. If you, if you haven't gotten very familiar with Plano OKC lately, you can go to planokc.org to review the plan. There's also a Phase One Code Diagnosis. Several of you were involved in in that project with Off the Coast Consultants and others. It looks like this. It's, I've also put a copy of this in the Microsoft Teams folder that everybody on this call has been invited to. But the code diagnosis basically went through and drilled down into really what wasn't working and what needed to change. So Plano OKC, the code diagnosis, existing ordinances. This is, this, this, very thick book is our existing zoning and planning code. So that's also obviously the basis for our work. And then stakeholder input, a lot of which we have gathered today and more of which we'll gather as we move through the process. So back to, you know, well, how does the SAT fit into all of this work? The SAT is in many ways at the center of the work. So throughout the process, we'll be bringing to you, as staff and consultants, we'll be bringing information to you to consider. You'll be asking us to research certain things and provide input on certain aspects of the code. There'll be a lot of information we've collected from focus groups, surveys, public outreach. We'll be bringing that to you to consider. The guiding documents we just talked about, such as the comprehensive plan and the code diagnosis. Then at certain times, a, what's called a policy committee will, will meet to further advise the SAT. The policy committee is made up of the city council and planning commission members who are on the stakeholder advisory team. So that's counselors Cooper, Nice, and Stone, and planning commissioners Powers, Cravens, and Highsmith. So at certain points on certain topics, we'll ask them to drill down into certain topics and feed those back into the SAT. So the SAT is going to be synthesizing all of, all of that information and input and using it to make their recommendation to planning commission and city council of how we should move forward and in the end recommending on a specific ordinance draft. So this team is bound by, by the Oklahoma Open Records and Open Meetings Act. That means we meet in quorum. That means we publicly notice our meetings. We keep minutes. We maintain records and recordings of those. The, these are public meetings and public has been invited. I can't see. I think there are some public members on the call right now. We ask, you know, for this, for us to achieve the guiding principles and the concrete results, we ask for regular meeting attendance and active participation. We anticipate that the team will meet every other month. We'll talk more about a specific meeting schedule at the end of the presentation. But for the first month, we're gonna try to meet a couple of times to try to kickstart some things. A regular meeting, attendance, active participation. That means ask questions, review materials before and after the meeting. We're gonna ask the team to, you know, really look at our work. You know, not ju, not just attend the meetings, but you know, really look at, hey, have we assessed the current code correctly, in your opinion? Well, we bring forth drafts of what the new code might look like. Do you agree with the structure, the components? Do you think the graphics are where they need to be? Do you think the maps are communicating what they need to communicate? Do, does it, we maintain that it aligns with the comprehensive plan? And that, and do do the code drafts incorporate public input? And do you believe we have solicited and recorded that public input appropriately? We'll also ask the SAT to point out where you think we need to, we staff and the consultant need to collect additional data or information. Where, if, if a goal is to create a code that is easy to use and easy to understand and easy to implement, we really need the SAT to ask questions. The staff and the consultant, we're gonna try really hard not to use too much jargon. But there are times throughout the process where we're gonna get pretty technical. And we won't know if we're getting too technical unless somebody asks the question and says, hey, I don't understand this terminology. I don't understand this concept. Please explain it, because that's a cue to us that we're not communicating effectively. So please don't be shy. I'll probably regret this later, but I do think it's important. Don't be shy about asking questions. If you're elected to ask questions in our large group meeting, feel free to email staff at any time, because it's very important that everybody have a good understanding of what we're doing. And one reason that's important is that at the two, two to three years from now, when we have we have, hopefully, the best new code ever proposed, we need the SAT to help build support for it. When your colleagues and, you know, other developers, other contractors, other professional service groups that you work with, when they ask you, hey, tell me about the new code. Hey, I don't understand why we're changing this thing. We want you to be able to reply, hey, there are very good reasons why we did that. Let me tell you why, as a way of building support to the various stakeholder groups. So with that background, I'm now going to invite everybody to introduce themselves. Tell us your name, your industry or area of expertise. And then I'll ask everybody to succinctly answer the question, what's the most important thing for the Development Codes Update to accomplish? And we are going to go in reverse alphabetical order. And to that end, I've asked Mr. Mark Zitzow to start us off.
Thanks, Lisa. Hi, everyone. My name is Mark Zitzow. I am the Director of Urban Planning for Johnson &amp; Associates. We're an engineering, planning, and surveying company here. The last question's kind of loaded and hard to come up with just one thing. So the things I've been thinking about recently that I'd love to see accomplished would be an elimination of minimum parking requirements, consolidation of urban design committees, and anything we can do to encourage small-scale incremental development in the core without making it more expensive. So I think that's it for me, Lisa, unless I missed anything.
I know, that's great. Thank you for being specific, but no, everyone else, don't feel compelled to be, you know, it's okay to be aspirational and not so specific, but thank you. We will record all of these suggestions and address them later on in the process. Marcus?
Yes, Marcus Uday, Universal Development. I would say the most important thing when addressing these code updates is just making sure that we revisit the current codes or restrictions that we have that would impact one group of people, maybe more than what's evident on the surface. So looking at some of the zoning ordinances that we have in place currently and seeing whether they're appropriate.
Okay, Marcus, thank you. Bryce?
Yeah, Bryce Thompson, owner of Core Construction. We are a commercial general contractor. I would probably say, for me, what the update is to make the process clear and easy for somebody to figure out how to walk through it, to create opportunities for people that might not otherwise take on the challenge because they don't know what they don't know. There's a lot of good people out there with great ideas but probably don't execute a little bit, so have your mind.
Great, thank you. Tim?
Lisa, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Hi, Tim Strange, President Newmark Grubb, Commercial Real Estate Brokerage and Chairman of Rose Rock Development Partners, office broker by background, multifamily developer of late. I'd like to see the plan implemented in the most practical, cost-effective way, including fees to developers. It needs to be, needs to be balanced and not burdensome to any parties.
Dema?
Dema Ramadan, CEO of DBG Construction. We are a general contractor, multifamily developer, and I would say the most important thing outside of what other people have touched on would be a expedited permit process.
Thank you, Dema. Mark Ruffin?
Yes, just here really to listen so far, so.
Mark, did you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Obviously, I'm in the commercial real estate business.
Thank you. And I wanted to see, has Janet Powers joined the call yet?
We're working on getting her audio fixed. She can see us. She will hear us soon.
Okay, I will, I will come back.
Lisa, it looked like we skipped over Todd Stone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's Todd. Thank you.
Oh, that's fine. I, my name's Todd Stone. I'm the city councilman for Ward 4. I have a little bit of history in construction and development. And I think the most important thing I would like to see out of this is efficiency, fairness. That's probably it. Those are my two main goals.
Those are, those are important ones, for sure. So Todd, Mark, so we'll come back to Janet. Emily?
Hi, I'm Emily Pomeroy. I'm a lawyer at the Center for Economic Development Law. We're a law firm that represents the public side of public-private redevelopment projects around the state and a lot here in Oklahoma City. I think an important part of an update to the code would be one that promotes equity and sustainability. Projects that seek to create urban fabric that's for people, think a code that emphasizes priorities would be a good goal to seek.
Thank you. Jim?
Jim Parrick with Bryce Edwards &amp; Company. I suppose I would like to see this result in a code that facilitates growth in a smart way.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nice, were you able to join?
I spoke briefly with Councilperson Nice, and she's in another meeting right now, and she's going to listen just a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Ricardo?
Hello, Ricardo Montoya, Structural Engineer with 360 Engineering Group. And my area of expertise is structural engineering. So the guiding principles that I kind of resonate with me in my practice and I like to bring to the table is essentially having a code that's user-friendly and that has community support and that uses best practices.
David?
David Lloyd, HGO Construction, a general contractor developer. And I'm piggybacking kind of off what Bryce Thompson said in terms of a clear process, something easy, it need to get answered very clearly defined, clear process.
Thanks, David. Mark?
Yeah, my name's Mark Livingston. I'm a developer and builder. I've built and developed in four different states. And what I'd like to see is make sure that we keep affordability in mind through this process. Also, the timing of how long it takes to get projects through city for approval, and then once they're under development, the timing of inspections. And then the last thing would be, as the code changes, making sure that that's communicated out there to the developers and contractors and builders, not trial by error, but upfront is what's happening, because we continue to still battle that. Thank you.
Thank you. AJ?
AJ Kirkpatrick. I'm Director of Urban Planning at ADG, a multidisciplinary firm in Film Row, part of downtown. I would say my biggest concern is making sure that we're doing urban info correctly and trying to allow people to move forward those projects that are doing the right thing without having to go through additional review.
Thank you. Andrew?
Hello, Andrew Huang, Partner at Depp Commercial Real Estate in Oklahoma City. Apologize for the background noise, and also a counsel attorney, real estate attorney at Riggs Abney. You know, honestly, I liked everything Mark and Dema said.
Okay, Julie?
Okay, sorry, had audio trouble. This is Julie Hornbeek, an associate at Reese Associates up on Lake Hefner. My focus is interior design, which is a little bit different with this group. I feel like at the front half of the alphabet, I sort of echo what everyone else has said, but creating a code that is enticing and encouraging for development, so something simple to understand that promotes, you know, urban growth.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Asa?
Asa Highsmith. I am Ward 6 Planning Commissioner, also an architect. I think I've got a, I've got a whole bunch of goals for this, but if I was going to rank them, I think my most important goal would be us finding a more equitable definition of what a neighborhood is. I don't think single-family is, as a monoculture in the way that we build it, is really the right way to move forward as a city. So I'd like to see us consider that.
Chip?
I'm George, part-time real estate developer, focusing primarily on historic properties in the central business district, but I would like to help accomplish or look at current code restrictions and challenges, and looking for efficiencies, streamlining the entire process from permitting through CO.
Hi, Chris Fleming. Like Chip, I'm a part-time real estate developer, and I think a goal out of this would be to come up with a predictable, efficient, fair process that reduces burden both on developers, city staff, the architects and engineers that bring it, for the design committees and the planning commission, just make it easier on everybody involved, not just, not just the one side of it.
Thanks, Chris. Clay?
Yes, yes, Clay Farha here. Our firm does development and management, and I was involved in the former processes. I just want to keep planning and planning. What I mean by that is, is it is planning for future development. And I do have some problems with the idea that on the outer core, that you can't even zone it because it doesn't have utilities, et cetera. And I know that that doesn't go well with the whole idea of interior development. But again, planning is planning, and another last thing I want to say is, I still don't understand what the LUDA is. I mean, I know what it stands for, but I don't understand how that works, and I'd, I'd like to get a better feel for that. And that's, those are, those are my goals. Thank you.
Thanks, Clay. Yes, we will make sure there's a thorough understanding of that. Carl?
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. Thank you for putting this together. I am a retired real estate developer, former banker, and have been pretty involved in Oklahoma City organizations. At this stage of my life, I would like to see us put together something that would enhance the city, also making it available for development as needed so we could continue to grow. I am particularly interested in the Innovation District over on the east side, and I want to see it put together properly. In my position of having been chairman of the Preston Health Foundation for quite a few years, I've watched that area grow, and it continues to amaze me with how much wonderful stuff is happening over there, and I want to see us keep doing it. And appreciate you putting this together.
Thank you. Jonathan Dodson?
Jonathan Dodson, Partner at Pivot Project Development Company. Well, probably what has resonated the most with me, what everyone has said, is the idea of equitable development. I think that would comment on maybe some of Asa's comments that he had earlier, as well as how historically I think our code has prevented other types of groups of people from being able to develop. And then I also think it should take into account sustainability in regard to preserving kind of the rural landscape of Oklahoma City, instead of eating up into that with development that I think creates a lack of sustainability for future generations.
Thank you. Joel?
My name is Joel Dixon. I am a licensed professional engineer, civil engineer here in the state of Oklahoma. And some of the, I guess, the goals that I have, the most important things I think that we should focus on, it's kind of threefold. Number one, I think we need to get, you know, get to a point where we can put people back at the center of our development. Too much of the 20th century and into this current century, we have put the focus on development on the automobile instead of the people that the automobile is meant to serve and that our urban-built environment is meant to serve. So I think if we can put, put people first in the development should be, you know, our most important thing. And related to that, I think being able to have development by right, so that we can incrementally develop, incrementally increase the usage, the intensity of our current built environment. And that ties really into being mindful of the public liability that we are putting on to the citizens of the city of Oklahoma City as we develop our municipality. We need to be able to pay for the roads and the pipes and the services that our citizens rely on for the quality of life that we have come to expect, and making sure that our development codes and our development patterns are conducive to supporting that so that we are not faced with outsized liabilities that the tax base frankly cannot cover. I think those are the three primary areas that hopefully this review will succeed in accomplishing.
Great, thanks, Joel. Scott Cravens?
Happy Friday, everybody. Scott Cravens, Ward 8 Planning Commissioner and Principal Managing Member of Full Sail Capital Investment Advisory Firm here in Oklahoma City. And like a lot of people on this call, apparently a part-time developer and real estate investor as President of Scott Investment Corp. My goals would be, I think this echoes a lot of what people had said, so I get to piggyback off of their brilliance. I think this process should be very predictable, I think it should create predictability for developers. I think it should be efficient, it should try to shorten the amount of time it takes to get something accomplished. It should be developer-friendly, so we encourage developers to continue to want to do things in Oklahoma City as opposed to Edmond in other places. I think it should be objective, which is a word I would use to replace equitable. And then I frankly echo a lot of Clay's comments. As a planning commissioner, Clay Farha's comments on helping the public understand what the comprehensive plan is, what a LUDA is, and what a comp plan amendment means and doesn't mean, I think there's a lot of confusion there. I think I'm sharing a lot of that up. Those would be my comments. Thanks for putting all this together, Lisa and the rest of the staff. I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Our pleasure. James Cooper?
Hey there. I'm Councilperson Cooper for Ward 2. For those of you who don't know, Ward 2's southern boundary is Northwest 23rd Street. We go all the way up to Northwest 122nd. Our eastern border is mostly I-235, sometimes western. And then our western border is Meridian, sometimes Lake Hefner, sometimes May Avenue. So my area of expertise, you know, I was a middle school teacher and I, right now, So my area of expertise, you know, I was a middle school teacher and right now I'm on a leave of absence and serve as an adjunct professor of film studies and philosophy and English, which is really my background, those areas. The most important things for the development code update to accomplish for me are as follows. One, I really would like to learn, which will require a lot of listening on my part, learn a little bit more from our developers to hear in what ways we as a city staff and council can help, you know, clear out whatever red tape seems to be there, if it's there, you know, so efficiency would be something I'm interested in. But then from there, you know, I've been doing my homework on this topic for a while now, and, you know, I live in the Passo. And to my mind, there was a moment, and I'm guessing this is going to disagree with some of the folk on this meeting, and that's fine because I think sometimes growth happens.